Good afternoon. Now I'll call this work session to order. This is Board Chair Christian Dorsey, joined today by colleagues Vice Chair Garvey and Board Members Matthew Ferranti, Katie Crystal, and Takis Karantonis. Today marks our final budget work session, or hopefully final budget work session, and will include a markup of some of the potential changes that we can make at this point in preparation of considering the budget for adoption this upcoming Saturday. Why don't we just begin with a discussion on what is known as the chairman's mark, which explains some ways of reaching budget balance and outlining what decisions are still left to be made during this conversation. Of course, anything that is presented is open to revision and amendment in advance of budget adoption. So as we pull that up on the screen, I will explain it briefly and then we'll have a relative informal discussion before I'll formally move this and then it can be considered for amendment. So if we start off at the top to situate us where we sort of begin this balancing exercise, there's a total of 6.9 million in one-time funding available, along with 3.8 million in ongoing funding, for $10.7 million total. From that figure, there were a number of items that were recommended by the county manager as a result of his mid-year and third-quarter revised budget estimates, and those are included on lines 30 through 43. And collectively, those left the board with approximately 1.6 million in ongoing funding and 4-point-something million in one-time funding available. From there, collecting some sense of collective or consensus priorities, here are a number of additions that are included in lines 44 through 53. I'll explain them briefly. Line 44, this is to increase the capacity at a relatively senior policy level to support the work at DHS. As we know, they have a very important and substantial portfolio that far exceeds existing staff capacity to proceed with as expeditiously and as thoughtfully as they would like, and so this would provide the ability for them to add an FTE to provide some critical policy support. As part of this year's package of reductions that were solicited from all departments, the county manager himself proposed a reduction of an environmental management specialist, which is part of what was the board's direction, to significantly increase the coordination on climate change from his office, and so this restores that cut that the manager was voluntarily offering. Then the next three items, 46, 7, and 8, include ongoing funding in support of the partnerships that we have, the Clarendon Alliance, the Columbia Pike Partnership, and the Langston Boulevard Alliance. Those three organizations have, with minor exceptions, been essentially flat for funding for the last several years, and while there is a lot that they are providing and a lot that they still want to continue to provide, they are limited by their capacity to hire the requisite staff to fulfill those desires, and they have much less, they have more limited, excuse me, ways of having their budgets rise to accommodate increasing staff needs compared to our bids, for example. So this provides a level of updating and stabilization of their financial picture. Arlington Independent Media, somewhat similar story. This is to restore funding that brings them approximately to where they were before we began a multi-year step-down in funding for that organization. They are under new leadership and have a proposed different mix of programs that they'd like to offer the county, but do not have the capacity at this point to deliver on those. And the three partnership awards are from ongoing funding, and the Arlington Independent Media budget item is from one-time funding. There's also some interest in participating in the capital contribution solicited from the Capital Area Food Bank for a facility that serves their activities in Northern Virginia, and that also support a number of Arlington nonprofit and faith-based organizations who receive food for their food distribution programming from the Capital Area Food Bank. Big item includes funding for AHIF, which collectively would now bring the AHIF totals to about 14 and a half million dollars in this year, still less than what was provided in the last several fiscal years, but substantially more than the 8.9 million dollars. What that would do is take AHIF to covering about one-third of the projected shortfall that would occur in fiscal year '25 as balances are drawn down and the ability to fund new projects become significantly compromised. So that would restore about one-third of that projected shortfall, and it would also provide the space if there is a program developed to leverage AHIF to support affordability in expanded housing options development, that would provide about a million and a half conceptually available for that. Then for Culpeper Gardens, we have heard significant challenges that they have had with assisted living residents and not being able to provide the growing subsidy for income-constrained seniors. This level of funding would allow for at least eight seniors to be subsidized at the levels that are required at Culpeper. And last piece, this is a little bit of a change from what you saw this afternoon, where the original plan was to propose that there be some funding available for our Department of Technology Services to leverage consultant help through an ongoing subscription that they have with Gartner. That has since been vetted and shown to be able to be fulfilled through other means. So this proposal is to provide some capacity for the Department of Parks and Recreation to increase their programming and staffing of out-of-school-time activities. They are doing some work to undergo what might be necessary and desirable throughout the year. This provides the ability for them to implement them should those decisions be reached before the next budget cycle. And altogether, that will leave, if we scroll down, approximately $15,000 in one-time funding available and a little less than $80,000 in ongoing available, for a total of 94,912. And these puts collectively at two and a half FTEs to the roster. And... Everything okay?
Is the total at the bottom still the same with the change?
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Karantonis.
So on the, just as a question, so the addition on line 53, program and staffing for the teen programs for DPR, it seems like a direct conversion of the previous appropriation for the Gartner's licenses. Is there any, or from staff, is there any insight whether this is a useful number for the purpose?
I think it's a good starting point. Like, right now DPR is really actively working on a series of new teen programming ideas, not only internally within parks, but they're talking with the District of Columbia, which has a whole suite of really innovative teen programming that I think we can learn from, as well as with libraries, DHS, other partners in the county. I think that work is like one or two months away from being crystallized, no matter what, no matter, no matter what, I think we're going to need staff. It's a good down payment. My expectation is we might be back next year's budget saying, oh, we need a little bit more, but we'll figure out a way to make do. Does that make sense? I think it's a great, it's a really great start.
Okay, so to understand that correctly, this, this would go to staffing. We don't know at this moment whether this is one FTE or 0.8 FTEs or, you know?
Yeah.
It's TBD.
Right, TBD, right, right. But we often, very often for some of these programmings, we use, we use temp staff, and that's the way it kind of works, so I don't know. You know, we can, we can make those bureaucratic FTE things work, and if we need to make an adjustment for an FTE, we can do so at closeout, if that makes sense. Does that, does that work?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Crystal.
I'll just note, too, my understanding is, and maybe Ms. Callen would like to speak a little bit further, to some of the work that the Department of Parks and Recreation has been doing, following up on our request, to investigate the idea of out of, extended out-of-school-time programming, starting to think about which facilities might be ripe for it, and learning from other nearby peer jurisdictions. So from my perspective, I would see this as almost seed money, so to speak, an opportunity to do some near-term activities to demonstrate, I think, some of the urgency that we're all feeling as a community, whereas it may take a little bit longer for a long-term strategy to come together.
Mr. D. Ferranti?
Just overall, thank you for all the work, and broadly, this is, just, it reflects housing, climate, seeking to serve our youth, and many of the priorities that I think we've talked about over the past work sessions. I'm mindful that there's, you know, 15 and nearly $80,000. There's not, we're sort of towards the final stages. I'll surface something without knowing that I've got a solution, and that is, I have had a couple of conversations with, and I guess this would be competing for what's left, mostly, but I've had a couple of conversations with the, one conversation with one of the judges, and with respect to, there's a criminal corrections unit, which is essentially probation, and because we have shifted our, to much more diversion, there's an indication that a halftime, starting in January, there may be a need for someone to help relieve caseloads. To be transparent, there is a vacancy that they're working to fill, but vacancies are harder to fill when you have immense caseloads, and so I just won't, I don't know if that quite fits, but the score that I talked a little bit with Ms. Callen was about 47,000. I don't quite, I think you count, you would count it as ongoing, but it's also a one-time for next budget year. We should do fiscally responsible steps, and so I don't quite know that it fits, but I did want to just put it out there and kind of indicate that I have done a little homework on it. I just didn't, you know, didn't quite, and I think what you've done, that would be probably the, almost the, one of the only additions, keeping in mind that we always have lots of additions that we would like and we just can't get to, but that's, I just wanted...
So that's 47 for a half FTE, and who would that, what department?
47.5. I think, at this point, Ms. Callen is going to know better than I. It's criminal corrections, I don't know whether it's situated with the sheriff, or whether it's DHS, or how it's situated.
I think it's on row 27 of the other potential budget allocations.
Yeah, it's DHS, the Community Corrections Unit is within DHS, and it is, I believe it's in Behavioral Health Division, CSB, I can't recall. But yes, the Community Corrections Unit, it's about staffed at four, they're down one vacancy. Their caseloads have been really, really high, almost double, like 90 a person, once they get this vacancy filled, which is not unlike any other story we've told you about clinicians that, that world, so hopefully that vacancy will be filled, but I think to get it, it was certainly an asset we heard about, and just when we're racking and stacking all the priorities unable to fund during the manager's proposed budget.
Okay. So that would be through DHS, okay?
Just checking, so, Mr. D. Ferranti, is this, this is an amendment, are we talking amendments? What are we doing right now?
He's surfacing it right now, so I think...
So we can get what we're surfacing. All right, I'm happy to surface something. Okay. All right. Great, okay, thank you. So I, one thing I'd like to mention, which I've talked to some of my colleagues about, is that the climate FTE, I think, most likely will not, I've talked with our, with Bill Egger, and I have the impression that probably not ready to actually hire somebody till January, so I think a half, an FTE or half the year would work there, which might be a place to pick up some extra money. And as my colleagues know, I would like to put in 62,000 to get our, our salaries, county board salaries, up to the maximum that we can do right now, in my continuing effort to make county board salaries close to an average income here in Arlington, and make it more possible for more people to actually campaign for these positions. I know there are six people running right now, but people come at very different ports to their career, and I think it's harder and harder for experienced people to actually run for these positions and hold them. So I would like to offer that as something to put in.
All right, so that number is 62?
62, mhm.
And that would be funded by...
Ongoing.
Taking 130, I'm sorry, taking...
Well, there actually was 79 left, so there was enough left originally when we started this discussion, if we take what Mr. D. Ferranti would like to do. But I think it may, somebody else will have to do the math, but I'm assuming if we cut the climate person back to a half a year, which I think is all we're going to actually be able to do, that would free up perhaps enough to make the difference. But I haven't, on the fly, been doing the math.
Okay, so your potential offset is reducing the environmental management specialist to?
To half, a half a year, yeah. And when I originally started, I didn't think I needed an offset because it was 79.
Okay, great. Okay, any other discussion, and then we can, well, actually, before we even do that, why don't I finish out just the balance of what we're doing for those who are keeping tabs at home. There is an implication for school funding for everything that has been done, and their one-time funding is, been modestly adjusted based on the mid-year and third-quarter results, and then on the ongoing side, there's an additional, make sure I'm going to get this right, $782,912 that is going to flow to them. Now, just to be clear, if we applied our traditional revenue-sharing principles, that number would be 782,912 plus 520. However, we are funding an initiative that we discussed through our work sessions, where we will have behavioral therapists that are hired, supervised, and overhead provided by DHS, but who will be otherwise available as full-time school employees. So as a result of that relationship, the staffing costs are being borne, the direct staffing costs for the four FTEs are coming from the school's transfer portion. And so with the slight reduction in one-time funding available to them, and the increase, the net increase in ongoing funding, there will be an additional $625,000 approximately that are going to schools as a result of this budget.
Mr. Chair, I have a few items I'd like to talk about that I am not actually going to offer, but I have some thoughts on. Is this the time to do that? You want to do that in concluding remarks? I'm not sure how you want to handle it.
Tell you what, why don't we get our mark through, and then we can surface any other conversations, since we have, you know, time is ours. Yes, yeah. All right. I guess it's now time to see if people want to look at amending this, and we'll just follow our modified Roberts Rules of Order, so I'll just go ahead and move this mark for further discussion, and I'll be in need of a second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Garvey. Already been discussed and explained, so why don't we move to proposed amendments? Ms. Crystal?
Well, I'm actually prepared, Mr. D. Ferranti's indulgence, happy to move your recommendation about the halftime behavioral health docket position. If I have a second for it, I wanted to actually ask a clarifying question.
Second.
Okay, so I, I did want to be clear, because one of the things of which I'm cognizant is that DHS is, of course, in their funding, or their staffing crises, as the entire field is experiencing right now. We had had that listed as a potential budget allocation for GDC, and my understanding were that the judges were interested in hiring somebody with in-court services for that role. Do I have that wrong? It was exclusively a DHS role?
Ms. Callen's going to know more. I did look at the, they asked, originally I was on a mental health docket.
Right.
Then in the proposed budget, there are mental health positions that are not court, but as I understand, are DHS.
Just DHS.
But so, they prioritize. Go ahead, Ms. Callen.
Yeah, and I think when you actually look at the letters that they submitted, they were advocating for the Community Corrections Unit and the positions in DHS, because it's the probation and parole counselors who, with the increased workload, the, the level of support where you're not on the behavioral health docket, but also on the increasing probation and parole, there's, there's a whole lot more that goes into it in terms of meeting check-ins, drug screening, just all the things that comes with being on probation, and then the, the extra supports that are needed to be successful in the behavioral health docket. It's that true services, and that's provided via the Community Corrections Unit embedded in behavioral health and DHS. So I didn't think they were looking for GDC for court services. It was really, DHS is providing the backbone of, of that, and we have, like I said, a four-person unit right now with one supervisor, two are filled, we have one vacancy. We've been struggling, but we've been, HR's been awesome about trying to work through. Okay, what do we do on all these areas to get these positions filled? And I think we have some, as Matt and I were talking about the other day, some optimism that we're making good progress there. We don't feel that the caseload is going away, and this could also possibly facilitate the accommodation of the docket expansion. It would be difficult to do so without that resource, do you know what I mean? It just, the success metrics wouldn't be there, so.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, just to speak to it. I think it is, it is worthy of inclusion, particularly given for the relatively small sum that represents the balance. I will note, I think that would leave us with, with a bit left over, so to speak. There may be other claims on it, but we, I believe, need to both authorize the creation of the FTE and fund it. If there is some balance remaining, and there is an opportunity to bring that person on sooner than a half-year, and some additional dollars might allow for that flexibility, I would be supportive of an allocation above the 45,000. But I think, assuming optimism, as you said, that we may be able to bring more professionals on, certainly the opportunity to expand that docket is one that I think is a closely-held goal of all of us, so I think that is a worthy use of the remaining dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm, I realize the way we're doing it, I'm a little bit in a conundrum, so I, I think this is great, it's a good position, but I only want to do it if we can cut the climate, because I have to do, cut a trade-off. I need to leave enough funds for what I want to do, right, on the, on the board salaries. So I'm not quite sure how to do that. So if we can reduce the climate FTE to start in January, which is, I think, when it will actually happen, which would free up enough money to cover this, and to do what I would like with board salaries, then I'm fine with it. But if we're not doing that, then I won't be voting for it, and I'm not sure how to handle that, because I don't know where we're going to be.
Yeah, it's a little tricky. I think we, my sense of reading the tea leaves is that we are, this is not going to be complex enough for us to keep the math straight in our heads and understand the implications of our decisions, and if we end up in a situation where we approve more than we have the dollars, we'll go through a process of figuring out what the cuts are.
All right, fine, so for that, for the moment, then I'm fine with this.
All right, I'll just say for, for my own purpose, now that that's been explained, that this is a position to actually support DHS's role in, in assisting clients who are on probation and making sure that they can meet the requirements of that, I think this is actually a really important act. You know, the probation system is one that can be really difficult in terms of how it's stacked against someone who is on probation or parole, their ability to, and not that I'm calling out anyone specifically in Arlington, but their ability to be subject to draconian conditions and people who violate them based on trivial transgressions is great, and having an advocate, someone who can counsel and help support, is a way to ensure that they can be successful, which I think is the goal, anyone who is placed on probation. So that meets certainly with my support, so thank you for, for raising it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karantonis.
In the same vein, I, I had the somber opportunity to see how it works and what happens when it doesn't work optimally, and it's really a, you know, probation system can be a mechanism of recycling people back to in compliance and therefore with draconian consequences. So that's, that's a pillar of equity, of an equitable justice system, to actually equip this system with the best people we can possibly afford. So I'm, I support that, and we can, you know, work through the reminder of the positions in the draft budget.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this particular proposal? Now move to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, that is included. You see, the effect on our running total leaves about 32,000 in ongoing, $47,000 total. Again, this is all fluid, so don't, don't worry, this is...
You already explained to me it was fluid, I'm not, I'm not worried yet.
Ms. Garvey, do you, would you like to formally...
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion that we add 62,000 for board salaries, to increase our board salaries, get us closer to a living wage for people doing this job, commence right with the time and the skills needed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. D. Ferranti. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I'll just say from my part, I intend to not participate in this vote, given that I am not going to be here ongoing, but certainly understand the spirit of what Ms. Garvey proposes.
Does that mean you're abstaining?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. Interesting. This is a really interesting, if I may, Mr. Chair, this is a really interesting conversation. I was thinking about this in light of the, you know, the increases last year, and we had talked about trying to get to something like the area median income for a one-person household. So I think that is reasonable. I am cognizant, however, that this is coming in context of our first year of negotiated wage increases with employees, and that feels like a context in which I look at significant jumps in county board compensation a little bit differently. Notwithstanding Mr. Dorsey's comments about not participating in this vote, I will participate in this one. I think in some ways, being most dispassionate about it is helpful here. But I really, in other words, I think, given the sort of sense of wanting to find parity with the general employee base after the negotiated salaries that we were considering this year by collective bargaining, would not be voting for it. But I did want to associate myself with one of the arguments Ms. Garvey made, which is the idea of encouraging more individuals to run, which is, I think, a really valid goal. And I know last year, when we did the $20,000 pay increases, we talked about that a lot. And I've been heartened by seeing the diversity of candidates who have come forward. So irrespective of how this particular vote shakes out, I really agree with that motivation. So thank you.
Thank you. And if I can say a few a little more?
Well, let's get Mr. DeFranti before you get around to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Garvey and Ms. Crystal, for your comments. This is not the easiest, the motion was to add the $62,000. And consistent with what you said, Mr. Chair, with respect to, it's relatively small amounts of money, I would certainly associate and support taking the $29,000 in ongoing and working it towards that $62,000. I am cognizant of the points that you make, Ms. Crystal, with respect to our employee collective bargaining groups. And I am aware of how much our community has asked us to invest in housing. I do think the sum is small enough that we cannot, it comes back to the principle for me, even sharing with our employee groups, we cannot have it so only those with, who bring a lot of means to this, to the possibility of running, are able to afford to run. That is not in the long-term or even, I think, medium and even short-term interest, and that's why I'll be supporting the amendment. I certainly understand the concerns you raised, Ms. Crystal, though.
Thank you. Mr. Karen Tonas and Ms. Garvey.
Mr. Chair, I mean, thank you for the proposal, for thinking about that and for discussing this openly. It is truly, has been always a problem that the county board salaries have been so low that they require that a board member should, would have to have either a very wealthy partner or coming from a very wealthy background or, you know, working a second or a third job. This brings us a little bit closer with the action last year, and this one brings us a little bit closer to a salary that can sustain a person and household in this office in semi-decent conditions. I believe that this is warranted. And we had the opportunity to discuss that entire year with the community and with a lot of, you know, people who know how this work takes place here. And we actually had, you know, we received a lot of understanding for this adjustment. It's still not a very big adjustment. It's a decent enough adjustment. And I cannot overstate how important this is for future board members to be able to look into this office and find a way of financial viability to be able to serve.
Okay. Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll just add, I appreciate all of the comments, and it looks like I have support, so I don't want to dig myself in a hole here. But I want to say, it's not just about allowing people to run, it's also to allow people to stay in these positions for a while. Often, if you're at a point in your career where you don't need to have a whole lot of money, you don't have a family depending on you, you can't afford to do this. And then as life happens and you have children and things happen, then it gets harder and harder to manage on these salaries. I think it really is a full-time position or darn close to, and it should be. It wasn't in the past. And I also will say, I mean, I've been doing these elected positions for about 27 years now, I think. There's never a good time to raise board salaries. They've always been low, and there's never a good time to do it. So I would like to do it now. So thank you.
Thank you. So I'll just say from my part, to be clear, you know, when we did this four years ago, creating this max cap, I certainly envisioned that at some point the board would get to that max cap. So I do not disagree with this in any way, shape, or form, but as someone who has made the choice not to stand for reelection, I don't feel I should ultimately be a part of the vote. So I appreciate the discussion, and I think we're ready to move to a vote on including Ms. Garvey's proposal to adjust board salaries up to the max allowable, which is a score or cost of $62,000 in ongoing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One no and one extension. So by a vote of three to one to one, that is now included. And as you can see from our running total, this now puts us in a position of needing an offset. But before we get to consideration of those, are there any other additions that people are interested in making to this mark? Mr. DeFranti.
Yes, but not under the constraints that we have. There's tons. I mean, I just wanted to repeat the point that there are tons of additions that we all would wish to make, but fiscal responsibility and restraint dictates no. Thanks.
I've already reserved time to talk about some of those.
We can speak about those at length in a little bit because it seems like we're flowing through this. Any other additions? Mr. Karen Tonas.
No, no additions. I just wanted to say that it's extremely important to keep in mind that the investment in housing and also in payroll and salaries, that is part of the main budget that we are not discussing right now on the mark.
Okay. So we now have to actually deal with some balancing. So looking at our figures, we are now in the red, lost the spreadsheet on the screen, so let me just refresh mine here. So we need to come up with about $30,000 in, or 29,592 in ongoing dollars. Ms. Garvey.
So I'll propose again my suggestion before, but we can, it doesn't have to be a whole year to take that out of the additional, what are we calling it, environmental management specialist, because I think it's going to be a while before that position can be hired. It looks like it would not have to even be an entire year, so.
Okay. That's a motion. Is there a second?
It's in fact three quarters of a year, two, yeah, three-quarters of a year. If the $30,000 would be deducted from $138,000, that would be the equivalent of nine months.
But that you could work nine months, you're only taking out three.
Yes.
Yeah. So instead of starting in July, start in July, August, September, October.
September, October.
So your proposal is to fund a .75 for that.
That sounds great. Thank you for getting me to a better motion.
Okay. Hearing none. That fails. So we'll now move to any other proposals to offset. Mr. DeFranti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Garvey, for the, the .75 is certainly tempting. I am struck by the, I am pleased that we have invested deeply in AHIF, and I will certainly be accountable. $800,000 in ongoing towards AHIF is much, much more than I had hoped because of our third-quarter economy projections. And so I would propose that we take the necessary amount to reach, which is somewhere in the, I don't know, 28,000, 30,000 in total, from the ongoing AHIF and ascribe it to the, to take the necessary steps to reach Ms. Garvey's proposal on board salaries.
Thank you. All right. So it's moved to take the, and I'll just recommend that since there's always a little bit of play with this markup in the actual budget, that we just make that around $30,000?
Sure.
Okay. $30,000 reduced from AHIF, and that's seconded by Ms. Garvey. Any further discussion? We can now move to a vote on that proposal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
By a vote of four to one, that carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeFranti.
I know there'll be additional pieces. I just did want to kind of try to clarify the, offer two thoughts on this. The step is essentially to go from, it's, I think it's a relatively modest increase. The $62,000 covers all board salaries, and so it would be actually in the range of $12,000, I believe, per board member, which from $77,000 to $89,000, I think, in the context of the inflation that we've seen, makes it, I believe is more reasonable. I also think the second point that I would like to make is just, we have not discussed what we all agreed in the manager's recommendation in this round, which was that not only would we do collective bargaining, but there have been requests from the employee groups that we work with through collective bargaining, the unions, that we invest significantly more. And we are doing that in a couple of different areas, in a number of different areas, with $520,000 in addition. And then with our firefighters, we've also agreed to addition to make sure that the request to get to step in grade, we start down that road. So I hope those are two pieces of context that are reasonable for me to share with colleagues and the community.
Thank you. All right. So this leaves our little spreadsheet bottom line with $15,000 in one time and $400 in ongoing, which especially the ongoing figure is nice to just have in there in case we made any minor math mistakes. But certainly, we don't need to close it yet. Mr. Karen Tonas.
There is a, there is still a $15,000 unallocated on one time, correct?
Correct.
So this could be added to the one-time part of AHIF in compensation for
So is that a motion?
Yes, it's a motion.
All right. So moved, so seconded by Ms. Crystal. Any further, Mr. DeFranti, conversation? All right. We'll move to a vote on that. Add $15,000 in AHIF one time. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. So that now leaves us with balances of $4 in one-time funding and $408 in ongoing. Okay. So our ability to have made math errors is significantly reduced, but I think it's okay. I think it's okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I don't, in terms of order and process, this may be something that is out of order. I'll just be transparent, but I have had some conversations. We have the Climate Action Fund, and I've had some conversations following up, which has, I believe, $235,000 left in it. And I had some conversations with Ms. Cowan, who has touched base with our air team, and there are two pieces of that Climate Action Fund that I'd like to see if colleagues and you as chair find in order. One is, there is space for additional electric vehicles, and there's also, which would, the estimate is that we could fit $100,000 in worth of electric vehicle charging stations. And the other piece of it is a down payment to explore a green bank, which would be $50,000. Those are late to the dance, but they are in a separate bucket wherein we have funding. And because of the recent data regarding climate, I wanted to sort of put them forward and let you and colleagues and Ms. Cowan and Mr. Schwartz offer thoughts with respect to them. I don't think they need to be acted on today, but I did want to, I thought there was enough merit, and I tried to do enough homework in a different pot of money, that I wanted to surface those for you and colleagues and the manager and Ms. Cowan's consideration.
Thank you for that, Mr. DeFranti. Since those proposals, as I understand it, since they would be directed uses of the Climate Action Fund do not affect this balancing exercise, so if we can table that for now until we can finish with this discussion, and then we can engage the manager in a conversation about how to have conversations about the utilization of that fund. Thank you. Okay. So we now have a markup that is at near balance. Are there any further puts and takes proposed to it? Which case, we will consider a vote on the entirety. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We can consider this the markup that staff will then perfect into all of the budget documents. For those keeping score at home, the board has not adjusted the proposed tax rate, which stays level at what it was this year. Fees, as have been proposed throughout the budget process, are carried over. And the budget changes that we have just discussed that are outlined on this spreadsheet from lines 30 to 84 are the sum total of the changes. That conversation is over. Now let's have some additional conversation on items that may be subject to further discussion, like what Mr. DeFranti brought up, or budget guidance.
Mr. Chair, one second. Just because I know we have to tick and tie all those numbers, we'll go back and check to the extent that there's $4 and $408 left over.
Yeah.
My sense from the board is that we would put that in AHIF
Correct.
As a balancing mechanism, once we figure out that the numbers are correct, which we're pretty confident they are. But we appreciate the flexibility.
Absolutely. Thank you. And you got the head nods for that. We don't need to go to a formal vote on that. Okay. Other items. Ms. Crystal.
I have a few items I've been working on in guidance. I'm happy to introduce them all at once, all three, if you'd rather me share the floor. I can do that as well. Let me speak first to an area that I know colleagues have heard me talk about that indeed we voted on actually earlier this year, which is transitioning to a new way of allocating dollars to community and human services nonprofits that better aligns with our stated goals, our adopted resolutions on racial equity, and our stated goal of transparency and decision-making. I will not rehash what I've brought before the board a number of times and colleagues, but I've so greatly appreciated your support for. But over the past now more than two years, we have been working with community leaders to envision an alternative. We are, I'm delighted to say, well underway in working on that transition, in particular thanks to really dedicated leadership from core members of the county manager's office, including our equity team, working with support from the United Way of the National Capital Area, working hard to envision and notice a funding available process, which can invite the best ideas from our community and enlist members of our community who have lived experiences interacting with the types of community-building services that our nonprofits propose to deliver on. And in order to effectuate that, they'll be putting out a call for projects or a notice of funding available in the first quarter of 2024. We will be convening that team of subject matter experts and community members, training them in racial equity as well as principles of grant-making, so that they can work on reviewing applications throughout the balance of this calendar year and into a little bit of the next, and make recommendations to, well, three-fifths of this board and two new members, when I say the board, around budget decision-making for fiscal 2025. The challenge of all of this is that it falls in between budget processes. And so I perhaps might have felt most comfortable making a pitch this year, I would have felt most comfortable making a pitch this year, to set aside some funding so that when we go to the community with a notice of funding available, we are prepared to fulfill that promise that we are making, that there is a certain amount of funding available and urging them to compete for it. That would, however, mean appropriating money in fiscal '24, that the board would then need to act to carry over at least into the first day of fiscal '25, when those awards will take effect. And in such a constrained budget, I understand it's a big ask indeed to try to put aside money that would not be spent until the following July. So I am going to ask and So I am going to ask and deeply urge colleagues to join me in giving guidance to the manager of asking him in his fiscal 2025 budget to set aside an additional $1.5 million. That would match the $1.5 million of existing funds. Those are monies that have been dispersed to nonprofits year after year in Arlington, and we are now urging those nonprofits to compete and put their best ideas forward in order for us to, I think, really go to the community in good faith and say that we want your projects. It cannot simply be about dividing an existing pie with more competitors, but rather does need to create new resources so that we can encourage nonprofits to come forward with those ideas. And obviously, we want to be able to make good on that promise. If we say there is going to be, I hope, $3 million available, I think it's important for us to make some kind of commitment. And so I would ask us to take the somewhat unusual step of requesting that the manager or giving guidance to the manager to include an additional $1.5 million in his fiscal 2025 proposal. Generally, we would do that during November. The notice of funding available will go out before the November board meeting. In fact, should go out the end of the summer. And again, I think it's really important, if we're going to make that commitment to the community, to, to have something to back it up. And so this guidance is how I propose to do it. I can pause there before talking about others.
Sure. So we look forward to your writing that up, and then as part of our normal process, we can have that ready for, for Saturday.
Indeed. I know generally, I know we've not shared guidance at the time of markup because it's very overwhelming. So possibly it would have been less overwhelming to see it on the screen than to listen to me talk ad infinitum about it. One other piece of guidance that is, speaking of ongoing conversations, we of course adopted zoning ordinance amendments last month to effectuate changes that, that would allow for the construction of new forms of housing in areas across Arlington County. The underlying goal of, of that work and so much of what we do around housing in Arlington is to increase the number of households who can afford a stake here in Arlington. But as we found in the equity analysis, those zoning ordinance amendments, we believe, will certainly increase the supply of attainable housing, provide price points that are not necessarily well-served by our market now, but won't necessarily get us to affordable housing. And with regard to ownership, our zoning ordinance defines affordability on ownership product as affordable to those making 80% or less of the area median income. I think in order to get there, especially with new EHO product over time, hopefully EHO product will, will age and become more affordable, but with new EHO project, that's going to take some support from us in the terms of financial support. As I've spoken with colleagues, I think offline, I've had some conversations with nonprofit and some with for-profit developers about what it might take to get missing middle-type housing forms built and committed, preferably through dedication to the Virginia Land Trust or possibly through other, I'm sorry, I'm having a word finding issue right now. Covenant, thank you, through other commitments in the covenants of those homes to affordability in exchange for some capital. So what I am going to bring forward with written guidance is the consideration that we direct the county manager to ask staff to bring us as part of the findings of the homeownership study ongoing now, which are coming by December 2023, recommendations about possible program guidelines and implementation to have an affordable EHO homeownership pilot program to support the creation of EHO-type product affordable to those making 80% or less of the area median income. And to, to suggest that the AHIF, I have confirmed with our county attorney's office, this is would be an eligible use of AHIF dollars, I think is, our chair referenced conceptually probably about $1,005,000. Might be enough to support a couple of these projects throughout the county, which I think we would all really consider a, a great success in the first year or two post-ordinance amendment adoption. But to defer the specifics on the amounts to the, the recommendations of staff after the homeownership study. So that will be another set of guidance I will propose. And then the final thing, just wanted to note, and, and our chair mentioned this quickly, I think we're all supportive of including the, the FTE and the funding for DHS backbone, which is to say policy coordinators, a policy coordinator role. We have heard calls in the community to have a dedicated childcare czar. Obviously, this is an issue that is incredibly important to me, and I associate myself with those in our community. And I think those in our staff would probably agree that we have great plans. We just need some support in helping effectuate them, especially with a focus on childcare that is affordable to our lowest-income neighbors. I strongly agree with that. However, I think how we work is perhaps more important than what we work on, and the strength of childcare initiative was a success, or you've seen other successful initiatives. It is because there's been staff who are able to work across sectors and across departments within the county, not because there is necessarily an individual assigned to tackle a particular need. And I am in fact of the perspective that having that type of siloing is the opposite of integrating the needs, since again, we do know that the, the issues like childcare, hunger, affordable housing are so interrelated. And so I think it's really important for us to signal our intent that that backbone staff should spend their first couple of years working on the childcare initiative, and particularly affordable childcare. I think that is a need that, that we've heard across the community, and I believe all board members share. But I, but I do want us to be clear that that is not the alpha and omega of this individual's job. And as that, that work continues, there will be new crises or needs that arise in our community that require savvy coordination, quarterbacking, project management, and coalition building to make sure that we really do have an integrated response. So thank you in advance. Ms. Cowan, I know, has been working with me and will be working with me on some guidance about our expectations for that position, and that childcare will be their first focus, but not their sole focus over time.
So we'll expect three blurbs of guidance from you on the child, on the nonprofit.
I'll keep them to a lesser age.
So the, the nonprofit funding NOFA process, EHO as part of the homeownership study, and the DHS FTE. Any other areas of guidance that you all are working on? Mr. De Franti.
It's a question. Well, first, I just want to thank Ms. Crystal for the work in all three areas. I know you have spent a lot of time working on each of these, and as you indicated, there would have been, might have been another first thought. And so I just want to thank you for channeling and focusing the work into the guidance, and I'll be supportive. The, the question has come up because of the addition of the, we want to try and address the needs of our teenagers. And I was thinking about some guidance along those lines. I don't know that with $95,000, we necessarily need that. I think that, I, I don't have extensive policy thoughts on it, but I did want to at least suggest, speak briefly to say that I support this area. There's been a number of emails today on this subject and over the last couple of days, and I may forward those for consideration, but not put them into the final, into final guidance form. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, I had a question, and actually apologies, it's for the manager, and apologies, I meant to bring this up last time we, we talked, and it's sort of a, a general thought. I know we're still working on moving to step system with our police, and I think there's some anxiety to have some commitment, and I think all of our intentions are there. Would it make sense to put something in the guidance to sort of show that commitment?
So as to, the board is, in December, you passed a good faith resolution to support the collective bargaining decisions that were made through the collective bargaining process. And today in the markup, you've added in sufficient funding for fire to move to a graded step system, which was the guidance I got from you back in December, and also for police to move to a graded step system. The question, and what I would suggest is language saying reaffirming what you did in December, the integrity of those awards. I'm not going to foreclose the option that when I come back in the '25 budget, that I, at that time, it may be appropriate to seek additional funds, but I would say for right now, it's really a choice between reaffirming the three-year commitment that you made in December, and then addressing that with the new budget, as opposed to saying, when it comes to fiscal '25, add more money. Are you following?
I am sort of, yes, I am following. Fine. I, you know, I just, I'd like, I think we're all trying to get to the same place, and I, anything we can do to kind of broadcast that. So if you've got any sort of suggested language that might be helpful, that would come, communicate that. Appreciate it.
And the manager and I were planning on working on that, Ms. Garvey.
Oh, yeah, I anticipated your.
So you shall hopefully see something that speaks to what the manager just spoke to. Mr. Karantonis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you for all the work that went into bringing, you know, building together this, this draft and getting this budget to, to the, to these outcomes. I really appreciate the effort that was invested in supporting AHIF and bringing AHIF to the, you know, making it to be responsive ball, responsive to the, to the need that still exists. It is true that this is still a little bit less than last year, but you know, this is what we can afford at this moment, and we have to look at, at, into the future to support the fund in the most robust way we can. What Ms. Crystal added is really a challenge for AHIF. I believe that's the right challenge for AHIF, and it just underscores the, the importance of focusing on this. So I think that the, the guidance has to reflect both things. First, how we support the, the current goals of AHIF and how we carefully craft new and expanded goals for AHIF, as the, as the eligibility of projects and, you know, the competitiveness of projects will be of, will be an issue as we go forward. And the second, and the second, as a second ranked, I think that the, the additional focus on the behavioral health and then, and, and the addition of DPR programs for teens is, has been a significant, has been a source of significant comments that we got. During the pandemic, we, these, these programs have suffered a lot, and I believe that the pandemic has just redefined what this program, how we have to think about these programs. And that means that we probably have to, you know, as you already have been doing, you're, you're asking experts, you're looking what other jurisdictions with, with, you know, good records are doing. I really applaud that. This is a good, good place to, to, to start. Our down payment, I have no, no doubts about that, is, is, is little. It's nothing almost compared to what I, I perceive every day to be the need there. And I do think that the, the environment and the challenges that we have through the opioid epidemic, the fact that we have to reach out to more, to more students, more constituencies in a multilingual, multicultural, you know, more diverse space, all these challenges are accruing, and therefore we need to focus on more robust programs and delivery here. I want to say for myself that I struggled a lot with issues that, for example, with staffing for the nature center, other things, the DPR, you know, and people who have testified here, I cared a lot about. I still continue to think that we have to, I, I will try to bring in guidance to keep our focus alive and, and specific about keeping these facilities in the best possible place so that they continue to provide service. I see that the, budget-wise, we couldn't do as much as would, I would have liked to do, but I think that this is a, an ongoing challenge, and we have to keep our focus alive on this. And finally, Mr. De Franti, I mentioned already, issues of enhancing our environmental activities, of being more focused on developing new and better programs, implementing better. I think there is a lot of inertia, or I should say, a lot of momentum actually going on. The air program for me really deserves even more support, and part of that is that we are strengthening our, also the, the positions at the county manager's level that will bring in this whole-of-government approach to things, where everybody will have a role in this policy deployment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Garvey.
Yeah. All right. This, this is not exactly guidance. This is now my sum up. Is that okay to do now?
Let's make sure we get all the guidance.
Okay, just checking. Just checking.
No more, no more guidance. The question is about when or how I might follow up on the climate thing.
We'll come to that after we dispense with the budget.
Okay.
All right. So the four pieces, just want to make sure we've captured it all, or Ms. Crystal's three, plus also how the, what the county board expects in terms of the manager's approach to fulfilling our collective bargaining agreements that have both been negotiated and that are going through negotiation. Anything else? Those four, going once, going twice, sold. That'll be it. Four pieces of guidance that we'll have for you. Ms. Crystal, I know you have a, a lot, and these are weighty, but if you could aim to circulate those by Thursday close of business, I think we'll be in good shape. Great. Thank you. Now, you all want to talk about other stuff. Ms. Garve.
It's related. Just want to mention a couple of things. The Board of Equalization stipends, which was a very small amount, 20,000, we're trying to recruit for the Board of Equalization, and I assume if we really need that, those funds, we will find them somewhere because it's, it's de minimis in some ways. Nature Center staffing continues to be a disappointment to me that we do not do that and keep our nature centers open. However, I'm, I think as we do more work on mental health, the need for climate education, the need for after-school activities, I think a lot of it may come down to, boy, if we keep our nature centers open, we could help people's mental health, we could give young people a good place to go, and we could also help educate our population about what they can do for the, for the climate, for the planet. So I'm, anyway, I haven't dropped the issue, but I think it will come up in some other ways because it fills so many of a, so many of the needs that we have, which is part of the reason I keep sort of supporting it, but I think it will come around, so I don't give up. And as my colleagues know, I recently kind of realized how much the climate, if you will, in our jail needs to be improved with paint and lights. It's, it's very grim in there. I also, with our last, finally kind of came to, with the, actually, the manager made a comment that really clicked with me, which is, our jails are mental health hospitals in essence. That's really what's happening in them, and I think we need to start thinking of them in that way. So moving forward, I think we need to do more of that, and I do think much improved lighting and paint. I mean, if you're not depressed before you go in, you are depressed. Oh my, I thought I turned off my phone. Apologies. If you're not depressed when you go in, you will be, if you've been there for a while. And it's not because of the people there, it's just, it's just simply gray and grim and bad lighting. I think with closeout, perhaps we can do something with that, and obviously, it was relatively new, and it is really something more for our sheriff to come forward with and make recommendations with, so hopefully we can come forward with something better and perhaps for closeout, because that is something I think we need to do soon if we're really wanting to address the mental health crisis of the people who are in our jails. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. De Franti.
I guess I wanted to just, I checked with Ms. Cowan with, and Mr. Manager, Mr. Schwartz regarding the Climate Action Fund and those two amounts that I mentioned.
Right. Actually, I think it would be appropriate, I'm going to ask Michelle to give you an update, because we've had conversations. Not all the fund has been allocated, and we have some suggestions after conversations with you.
Sure. So the, the fund was ceded, capitalized, if you will, in last year's budget for $1 million. And we said we would come back during this budget process with our initial set of proposed recommendations. So if you recall, and be happy to send this out to you again, during the DES operating budget work session and the capital work session, we kind of laid out what we were thinking, which was a total allocation of around 765,000. 350 of that was for some additional EV charging stations and associated infrastructure, electrical engineering at public-facing facilities. And that would increase our, when I say community centers, we identified four in libraries, central, Barcroft, Cordova Plaza here, Bosman area, I believe Fairlington. The other allocation of around 200,000 was for, and coupled with, with PEGO funding, was for evaluation. You heard, I think, an interesting presentation from DES on our new tool for decarbonization facilities, so using part of that fund to advance more studies, and then the investments in some of our facilities as we're looking at HVAC replacements. And then the other allocation was for $200,000 for CCA study that we've begun to work on with Fairfax. So that leaves about 100 and whatever, 65,000. I'm sorry, my math is really bad. So what Mr. De Franti and I talked about, that, you know, an actionable item is certainly additional $100,000 to EV charging stations. We could put in another four to six on top of that at TBD locations, but we think that we can move on that this fiscal year with completion in early '25. And then I know that you all have expressed interest in further evaluation of a regional green bank approach, which we've Green Bank approach, which we've, Fairfax originally wanted to go on their own. I think they've backed off and are now looking at a more regional approach. So our staff have been working with their staff. We've heard different things. We both have heard, are they starting in summer? Is it going to be fall? Like, Dimitri and her staff have been talking to them like as recently as last week. So we thought as an option to put in, you know, $50,000 to make sure we have the seed money ready to go when they're ready to go. We certainly know that that would likely require more money, but we could address that as part of next year's budget or once we get scope and plans finalized. Those funds have been appropriated, so honestly, I think it could just be handled via guidance, right? And this is how we would direct that balance. And then whatever's left, you know, we could talk through again for next year and what we would do with it. And does that make sense? Does that cover it, Mr. DiFranti?
Sure, sure. I'm happy to write very brief guidance. It might be shorter than the three pieces of guidance that Ms. Crystal does, but certainly, I think that I've tried to do the homework on this, and there are specific individuals who come forward, and we won't specify which, where the electric vehicles, but there are different parts of our community that have come forward and want to make sure there's sufficient capacity. And then I think the Green Bank have tried to pursue it sufficiently and keep the dollar amount small so that the seed funding would be within the manager's purview to figure out what's appropriate to spend. But at least it keeps us moving forward in light of the continued painful statistics and painful analysis that we see. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. DiFranti. You know, colleagues, I'd love you to get your guidance to weigh in before we direct Mr. DiFranti for guidance. I mean, what I heard from both what you're asking and what Ms. Cowan outlined is exactly what we want this fund to do, to sort of be available, to work quickly, to take advantage of real opportunities. And so I think you can actually accomplish the same goals by leaving it undirected at this point, by leaving the space available. So that if at some point, if they just think that $100,000 for the bank is better throughout the course of the year and fewer charging stations, I'd love for them to have that flexibility a little bit than programming every last dollar, but leave it up to discussion.
I'll.
Ms. Garvey?
I got my light first. I absolutely agree with that. We'll see, and it could be that if we manage to do, in cooperation with Fairfax or some others, we can get maybe a lower cost for putting in the station. Who knows? I think giving the flexibility is where we ought to go. So thank you. Hopefully, Mr. DiFranti agrees.
Mr. Karantonas?
Setting up a Green Bank is not an easy thing, and it's really, you know, we see that when a very big jurisdiction tries to move on that. So this $100,000 would be probably needed to be specifically available to evaluate how we can dock in into this effort and, you know, how the Green Bank would be designed and, you know, compartmentalized in order to serve different constituencies across the region in a collaborative system. So while I agree that, you know, this is already available money, and there is a thinking behind that, directing it and making sure that, you know, this is kept as a goal to dedicate some effort on defining and configuring our own, you know, pathway to a Green Bank collaboration, I think that this is still worthy of mentioning that in guidance.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. DiFranti?
I think, I'm happy to try to fashion two sentences that seek to address your concern. I think part of me feels as though the $100,000 in electric vehicles is an operational decision that if there's space, I'm sort of slightly more inclined to be flexible and defer on that. But the Green Bank, at least I'd want to, I'm attracted to a presumption to move forward on that, and I recognize that there could be concerns. But, you know, that's my take. I could also say, write in the guidance and work with Ms. Cowan to do it, to say, either of these two, unless, you know, the manager should see other priorities that accelerate it. I don't know that that fully addresses your astute point, but I guess it's, this is born of an urgency with respect to the Green Bank in particular and a collaborative piece that, and also conversations with our community as well, that leads me on the Green Bank to be more inclined to try to sort of put a bit of a presumption without a binding piece to that, so.
If I could just add one thing, I want everybody to understand, including those people who have been very vigorous advocates for the Green Bank. I know members of this board have talked to their colleagues in Fairfax. I've talked with my colleague in Fairfax several times. I know Ms. McBride has talked with her colleagues in Fairfax, and a lot of people in our C2E2 community have talked with people in Fairfax. Fairfax is fully on notice that we want to partner with them.
I just want that.
Ms. Crystal, yes?
This is not a hill on which I need to die, and I appreciate that this is an attractive idea to some of our colleagues, so I think that's fine. I guess I would just say, one of the reasons I think we're all so delighted to have Mr. Ayers on board and to have that office fully functional is to be able to bring not just the political urgency, but the real analytical sense of where is the most bang for our buck. And I really see this fund as one of his key tools to do it. I'm not certain that it's always the case, that the thing that is sexiest or most exciting to us or generating the most attention even among our very smart advocacy community is the thing that will most deliver on reaching our goals. And I am excited to now have somebody to advise us on that. So again, it's not a hill on which I need to die. And, Mr. Frandi, I think you've rather clearly kind of suggested that the flexibility would be there if needed. But I think keeping that fund flexible to be able to show real movement, right? Because that's why we created it. There's a desire on the part of our community, on the part of this board, to say that we are demonstrating a level of action that is commensurate with the urgency of the threat of greenhouse gas emissions. And so, you know, to potentially tie down some of those dollars that are supposed to be able to help us demonstrate near-term success to a big idea, a big complicated idea that may take quite a bit of time to get off the ground. I just wonder if we're working at cross purposes with our own desires in setting up that fund last budget cycle. So consider that, again, grist for the mill. It's not a, you know, so deeply held of a position that I wouldn't be supportive of a direction colleagues wanted to head if it differed from it, but wanted to at least raise that consideration.
Thank you. So is your direction clear?
As much.
I'm flexible. I don't want us to lose, we have added a full climate position, which is not something we expected, and a significant victory that I don't want advocates to lose. And the only other, I'm okay with not writing guidance because it would feel like I was turning in circles and writing legalese. But I think the other point that I would just make is the urgency of expenditure. This is, I don't want, I want us to, and Bill, Mr. Edgar can do this, I won't write guidance, but it, you know, I think that we've aired the discussion, and if there's a Green Bank opportunity that makes sense, we'll jump on it. And if there are additional electric vehicles that makes sense, vehicle charging stations that makes sense, we'll jump on that, too. Thank you for the discussion.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it up, for sure. Anything else for the good of our order today?
One thing I did want to mention, we will, as the board has a 72-hour rule on posting board reports, but this has always been an exception granted to us.
Yes.
Given with this work session, we will have the board reports posted as quickly as they're completed, hopefully by Thursday. So if the public is dying to read the resolution, our team is going to be at work as soon as we leave here.
You are free to dispense with holding yourself to that policy, given that we amply, amply engage our public in understanding our budget through these myriad work sessions, including this one. So I believe the actual written material just codifies everything that we have discussed. So you are free of that obligation. So I think that, seeing no other lights, I think that takes us to the end of our business today for our public. The board will adopt the budget, calendar year tax rates, fee changes, and code amendments at our Saturday meeting on April 22. And as a reminder to everyone, we have had our public hearings on both the budget and the tax rate hearing, so we will not be hearing speakers on this item, and the discussion will be entirely with the board. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much, Ms. Meredith, Mr. Stevenson, Ms. Hughes, and everyone who worked on putting together the budget in addition to, of course, our manager and deputy county manager. We do appreciate it. Our FY '24 budget season is almost done. Thank you all.